All right, let's open the city council work session for September twenty 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 one. This meeting is now called to order. There is an agenda in Spanish on the city's website. A roll call, please, Sue.
Counselor McBride.
Here.
Counselor Cofield.
Here.
Counselor Yarrell Holloman.
Here.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Counselor Finley.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all present.
All righty, thank you. Council agenda and meeting, anything to discuss prior to the business session, folks? I think we may, I may bring up just a reminder item regarding a proclamation. No, not a proclamation, a resolution that was passed in twenty seventeen regarding being a welcoming city. But we'll bring that up later in the meeting if that's okay. All right, all right. Anything on the business items? Anything to add or anything else on business items? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on. Now I get to read the script because we're going to go straight into executive session now. All right, I will now read the announcement card to hold an executive session. After the announcement, the Zoom meeting will terminate and the council will enter into a separate Zoom meeting, not open to the public. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS one ninety-two six sixty-two, legal counsel. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons will be allowed to attend the executive session. No decision will be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, the, the work session of the council meeting will adjourn and we will not return to open session but in the business session. All right, so let's, I guess we'll sign out soon and we'll have to sign back into this one.
Yeah, I won't be in there, so it'll be Dan. Dan will be letting you in, okay? So go to your other link.
Other link, folks.
Okay.
All right, I think we're at about seven oh five, just a little tick after. So let's call the city council business session for September twenty twenty twenty-one to order. There's an agenda as well on the city's website in Spanish and a roll call, please, Sue.
Mike McBride.
Here.
Bryce Cofield.
Here.
Elise Yarrell Holloman.
Here.
Jules Martinez Plankarte.
Here.
Mayor Rogers. Denise Bacon.
Here.
And Stephanie Finley.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all present.
Hey, thanks so much. See my flag in the background.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
All right, well, thank you all. All right, moving on to item four in our agenda presentations. I have a proclamation here for breast cancer awareness month. So if you will indulge me, I will read this. Whereas breast cancer awareness month is recognized in October. Whereas breast cancer is experienced by both men and women, it is the second most common cancer after skin cancer. Whereas cancer awareness and prevention disproportionately impacts those with less access to medical care, less transportation, those with food insecurity, and those unaware of the importance of regular cancer screening. Whereas the pandemic has resulted in a decline of cancer screening by eighty percent nationwide. Wow. And those who are receiving treatment are experiencing even greater financial and personal isolation. Whereas area partners include Yamhill County Public Health, Virginia Garcia, Providence Health and with, and the With Courage team who is starting Paint Newburgh Pink campaign this year with local businesses. And I believe Caitlin is at STICA is on the line in order to receive the proclamation. They're all working hard to bring awareness about breast cancer screening to the attention of our community. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by the mayor and city council and on behalf of the people of the city of Newburgh, Oregon, that we proclaim October twenty-first Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We encourage all persons to schedule regular breast cancer screening to protect their health and keep our, our community strong. We thank our local partners and businesses for increasing public awareness about breast cancer and their efforts support to support those families experiencing cancer treatment. So thank you to Caitlin and all the folks that are working diligently on this and let's do Paint Newburgh Pink. Please, anything we can do to help, please let us know.
Rick froze.
Nope, sorry.
I think you froze.
Can you hear me? No?
Now we can.
Okay. You, sorry.
Can't hear you.
On. Okay. Let's try this. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me or?
Ask Rick.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, and all right, so anyway. Okay, before I do that, I see that Caitlin is on the line. So Caitlin, we just, we just did the proclamation for breast cancer awareness. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Hi, thank you so much. Yes, so With Courage is a nonprofit. We serve Yamhill County only, and you may have seen our pink lights in McMinnville and Carlton. And we're excited to be moving into Newburgh because we do serve Newburgh as well. And we do a lot of work with the hospital there and as well as McMinnville. So we are excited to, you know, move your way and meet all of you and continue our mission to help local families in Yamhill County impacted by a breast cancer diagnosis. So thank you for, you know, joining us in that. We really appreciate it.
All right, well Caitlin, thank you for all of your good works and anything we can do to help, please let us know. And shout out to my sister Wendy, breast cancer survivor. So there you go.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then on the other that I was just starting to mention, as we might have noticed that Newburgh has been who's recently had an elementary school. I'd like to refer.
Rick, I think we lost you.
I'm out. I'm gonna have to sign back out, come back in.
Oh, good. Sorry, Rick, you can come to my house if you want. Council President Finley.
How about if we move on to the consent calendar while he is signing back on? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move ahead and accept the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Second.
Or third.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, it passes.
Council President Finley, one, one other item for the, for the record, just in, in approving the consent calendar. I take it that it is acceptable to the council that Mayor Rogers abstains from this particular vote given his, his absence at this time?
Yes, thank you, James. All right, staff, what is your pleasure for while we're waiting for?
Would you like, would you like a brief city manager's report?
Yes, let's do that. Dan, it's all you.
It's not going to take a whole lot of time, unfortunately, maybe fortunately, depending on your preference. Just a few items to summarize, but wanted to speak to COVID, unfortunately, is an ongoing issue. Just the update being that city facilities are still closed. We're still working on when we can come back full force and with all facilities open and really taking our sort of marching orders from an ongoing observation as to the hospital case loads and, you know, really where the, the disease prevalence is and some of the risk factors there for both the community and creating spaces that folks can possibly transmit and, you know, just really trying to keep our staff's health paramount and keep them safe. So library is curbside, continues to be, municipal court is telephonic, which is a fun word to say, but means that they're not in person. And so we try to continue where we can. We'll do curbside and other meetings and, and really trying to make sure that we provide or continue to provide service. That's, that really is the most important thing, that we provide service to the community. But again, trying to do it in a safe manner for all involved. So we'll try to continue to update that, bottom line. Just a quick summary as well from the budget committee for those who, I think most of the council was there, of course. But for the community and those who might be listening, we spoke last week about the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and some of the funds that the city will be receiving over the next couple of years and have about five or so years to spend. Looking to create some criteria, you know, essentially to really try to get some, some progress and move, moving forward for the city staff. And so some action steps that we have is to reach out to the business community, started that process already by reaching out to the leaders of the existing representative groups of the business community, the Chamber, NDC and Taste. But also going to put together some survey opportunities as well as trying to look to some in-person information gathering around needs in the business community as well as some programmatic things we might be able to do to support folks. Also looking at, let's see, ways to promote existing resources. The YCAP actually has funding for individuals and families already, rental assistance, utility bill, payment assistance, et cetera. And so trying to get those posted on our website and or linked, get information into people's hands about resources that are already out there and that should be available to, to those in need. And then we will be creating additional information, I guess. So as we do research, we'll come back to the budget committee likely in December, but we'll continue to, we'll create a webpage and a landing spot for folks who are interested in what the city's doing, how we're spending their resources. And we'll try to continue to update that as well. So the community has information as to how we spend the money. Mayor Rogers and I were able to do a tour of George Fox with President Baker. And that was a really good opportunity to connect, had the opportunity to, to see the campus, which sadly for me is really the first time in a year and a half that I'm able to be on campus and really kind of get a tour from and be in with people in some of those buildings. So speaks to COVID, I guess, but also kind of the, the steps that the university's taken for student safety. Had a good conversation about a number of things, but also really pledged to work together on economic development and some of our community opportunities when it comes to civility or listening, et cetera. So look forward to, to working with the university on community conversations as much as anything. We were able to come to an agreement on translation services with an Oregon-based company called Lingwava. Working on rolling out training to our staff. This would be a number of services under contracts, one being live interpretation of meetings, like council and board commission meetings and things like that, as well as translation, public engagement materials and, you know, website, potentially other kinds of things of that nature. So good thing is having a go-to source for that, you know, and really being able to, to be more robust in how we provide Spanish language and actually American Sign Language and other resources as well. So excited to get that launched and I think it'll be a benefit to the community. And then lastly, you know, I think that Mayor Rogers is probably going to speak to this when he's able to. But, you know, yeah, we're, Newburgh is unfortunately in the front page of the Oregonian again. And, you know, kind of breaks my heart, honestly, just seeing this ongoing series of, of issues of, of opportunities for our, our community to, to come together. And, you know, really, I guess for me in the position of city manager, it speaks to the opportunity the city has to, to do better. You know, I think that we're trying very much to, to do outreach to, to serve the entire community and make sure that, you know, we're informing folks when there are opportunities to provide us with feedback. We're trying to take that feedback and, and improve. It's an ongoing process. It takes a lot of effort to do that. And it's not always quick. I apologize that it's not, but it's just not, you know, this is a bit of the, you know, changing course of, of a large enterprise. It may not be as large as, as some, but, you know, it's still, it's complex. And so, you know, we're taking it seriously. We're trying to get feedback from, from the community, from, you know, those who consume our services. We're also trying to do things like the translation services to better provide accessibility to our entire community. I'm certainly open to the idea that we can do a whole lot better. So I guess I would just request from the community members who are either listening or, or here, you know, if there are things that we can do better. We're working on a list. We're working on improving those things. And, you know, I guess you have my commitment to doing that. And I think accessibility and inclusion are really important values. And it's stuff that we're, we can, we can talk about all the time, but I think if we don't act on them and, and really earnestly try to move forward, I think it's just talk. So I'm talking about it, but I guess, you know, to summarize, we're, we're doing outreach. We're doing, you know, trying to post our jobs to be clearer that all community members, all, all people are welcome to apply and encouraged to, or trying to, to make sure that things are posted in, in multiple languages based on the fact that we know that people in our community consume information in at least two major languages. You know, we're, we're looking for ways to be more inclusive of folks of all abilities. We invest in ADA transition plans that we're going to talk about and in sidewalks and ramps and all kinds of other things as well. So we're, we're looking to put both money and time where our mouth is. It's important to me that we do that. So that's my soapbox and I apologize for being on it, but I will get off. So that was it for me. Thank you.
All right, sorry about that. Stephanie, thank you. Thank you for stepping in. Sorry, I think I'll be better now, but don't count on it. But anyway, we'll try to give this a whirl. All right, any questions for, for Dan, folks? Questions or comments? You know, one thing I did want to, I, I think I mentioned, and this was before I froze the last time. But in March of twenty seventeen, which actually was probably before most of this current council was seated, except for our friend, our veteran friend Denise. Resolution twenty seventeen thirty-three fifty-nine was adopted by the council. That was a resolution that declared the city of Newburgh as an inclusive city for all persons regardless of race, color, national origin, immigration, or refugee status, religion, sex, mental, emotional, and physical ability, age, or economic status. So again, I think that that was adopted quite a number of years ago. Still something that is, that Dan has mentioned is something that's forefront for us. And as we know, it's also a, one of the council's primary goals. So anyway, and I think all of us can work to do better just every day. And that, that we must know that these news stories do not define us. They are, they are not who we all are. So anyway, anything else on that and/or the city manager's report? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Public comments, Sue, can I open public comments? They're open.
I did not have anyone register.
Public comments are closed. All right, next, we'll move on to the consent calendar, item seven. I will entertain a motion if you are so inclined.
Yeah, we already voted.
Where are we?
Gone a little bit.
That's efficient. All right.
You're on the ordinance twenty twenty-one twenty-eight eighty-eight.
Okay, there it is. Ordinance, you heard it there. Eight A, I should say, on our, on our agenda. So let's turn it on to that. This is an order to amend the comprehensive plan map designation from industrial to medium-density residential and zoning map designation from light industrial to medium-density residential property located at seven thirteen East Vermillion Street in Newburgh. All right, is this you, Keith?
This would be me.
All right, thank you, Keith.
Give me just a minute, Keith, I gotta, I need to get your PowerPoint up. Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, would you like to call to order this quasi judicial?
Yes, I certainly would. Thank you. All right, yes, this is a quasi judicial land use public hearing. We are now opening the public hearing and the purposes for the discussion as mentioned of ordinance twenty twenty-one twenty-eight eighty-eight, amending the comprehensive plan from industrial to medium-density residential and zoning map from light industrial to medium-density residential for a property located at seven thirteen East Vermillion Street in Newburgh. All right, I'll call now for abstentions, bias, ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction. Hearing none. I will now turn it over to our city attorney for legal announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are certain announcements that are required before the commencement of a quasi judicial land use hearing. This hearing deals with the adoption of amendments to comprehensive plan map and zoning map designations for property located at seven one three East Vermillion Street. The announcement required by the Oregon revised statutes, ORS one ninety-seven dot seven six three, is as follows. The applicable substantive criteria for the decision are listed in the staff report under exhibit A to ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two eight eight eight, which is attached to the council agenda. Two, testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described above or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation that you believe applies to this, to this decision. Three, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. Four, failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The applicant who has the burden of proof may have at least seven days after the record is closed to submit final written argument. At the close of the testimony portion of the hearing, the applicant will have, have to decide if the applicant wishes to submit for the written argument. The following definitions are pertinent to this point, under ORS one ninety-seven, excuse me, dot seven six three. Argument means assertions and analysis regarding the satisfaction or violation of legal standards or policy believed relevant by the proponent to a decision. Argument does not include facts. And part B, evidence. Evidence means facts, documents, data, or other information offered to demonstrate compliance or non-compliance with the standards believed by the proponent to be relevant to the decision. Any submission by the applicant must be limited to argument. No additional evidence can be submitted. If the applicant wishes to make final written argument, no further deliberation shall take place tonight. If the applicant waives that right, the council may proceed with deliberation.
All right, and with that, I think we are ready for the staff report.
Thank you. My name's Keith Leonard. I'm an associate planner here with the city of Newburgh. I'd like to enter in my staff report for CPMA twenty-one dash zero 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 one and ZMA twenty-one dash zero 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 one. This is for the property located at seven thirteen East Vermillion Street in the city of Newburgh, and the property owner is Janelle Ba. Next slide, please. Okay, sorry about that. So here's the location. This is East Vermillion Street. The predominant land use along this street is residential. There is an industrial use to the west, immediately to the west of this property. But this, this street is predominantly residential. Next slide, please. So the request is to amend the comprehensive plan map and the zoning map. The comprehensive plan map would be amended from industrial to medium-density residential or medium-density residential, and the zoning map would be amended from light industrial M two to medium-density residential R two. The tax lot is six hundred. The applicable criteria out of the Newburgh Municipal Code is section fifteen dot three zero two dot zero three zero A three. And just a little bit of background on this property. So the property is about nine thousand ninety-eight square feet. There is, right away, immediately south of this property that is also carrying the same zoning designation as M two. So this amendment would cover both the lot and that property just to the south. Another, another thing to point out, the minimum size for industrial land is actually twenty thousand square feet. So what we have is a legal non-conforming home here. It's been a home since like the nineteen fifties. Not sure why it's industrial at this point, but it's been lived in as a home and used as a home. Next slide, please. Here's a comprehensive plan map. As you see, all around there, you have medium-density residential. We do have some George Fox University uses further to the east. But predominantly, this is residential street. Next slide, please. Zoning map, there's the M two in blue. And you'll notice that all the other properties around there are either R two or R three or, or there is a corner store there that is C one. Next slide. So here's the industrial land use analysis. What we're looking at here is a deficit of about forty acres of industrial land and for the EOA, which has been acknowledged by the city council but not adopted, that shows a deficit of about a hundred and fifty-six acres. Next slide, please. Here's population forecast. In twenty twenty, we were setting at about twenty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven folks. You'll see each year, every five years, we're gaining population between six and seven percent all the way to twenty sixty where we're at, population about forty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven folks living here in this town. Next slide, please. Here's what we're looking at is a medium-density residential. It's highlighted, they're in yellow. So the comprehensive plan shows, and that's what we have to go back to. We have to go back to comprehensive plan because that was, and then we also use the cases that have been looked at in between the comprehensive plan and all those amendments. So that's how we come up with some of these numbers. But this here is the comprehensive plan map and we do a plan that we have to rely on. And that shows a deficit of thirty-one acres for medium-density residential. And as I had mentioned before, the HNA has been acknowledged and adopted. So we're looking at about thirty-four acres that were identified as a deficit for medium-density residential in that more up-to-date document. Next slide. There are three criteria that we have to look at. The first criteria is, does it promote the policies of the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and the code? The second one, are there public facilities within the area that they could hook up to? And then the third criterion is the state transportation planning rule. Basically looking at, will this change increased traffic to the point that it, it becomes a problem, I guess? To put it in light terms. Next slide. Newburgh Comprehensive Plan, state and state planning goals, your, the staff report has those listed out in, in link. And you'll see that both the comprehensive plan and the statewide planning goals are met by this proposed comprehensive plan map and zoning map amendment. Next slide. Public facilities are available. So currently, the home is hooked up to water and sanitary sewer. There is a storm sewer that's in the area just to the north. That one's kind of unidentified. It's on our GIS. And, but it's, it's not hooked up to this property. And at this point, the property isn't hooked up to a storm sewer. But that would be available within three years. Next slide, please. And the state transportation planning rule, the proposed change will not increase the traffic. It's been a home since the nineteen fifties. It's going to continue to be a home. There is the potential that the property could be partitioned into three lots. So that would increase slightly the amount of traffic. But in medium-density where we're lacking a number of units or acres in that, that designation, it wouldn't be a bad thing. Next slide. And the staff recommendation, I'll hold off. I'll let the city council discuss this and ask for comments from the applicant and all that, and I'll come back to it. Thank you.
All right, Keith, thank you very much. All right, so I will now open public testimony. Do we have anyone ready for public comment, Sue?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, any agency letters or comments? All right. Any agency letters or comments?
No, we haven't got any since the staff report was released.
Okay, I will then close the pu- public testimony portion of the hearing and city, uh, city attorney legal announcements, please.
Just, just before we go to the city attorney legal announcements, do we want to to open the floor for any proponents or opponents? Or undecided individuals to to comment?
I think I asked for public comment. I don't think there are any. I think we're all, I don't know if there's anyone. Is there somebody representing the owner, Keith?
I had told her I gave her the link and she said that she would probably attend. Um, it said that she may not attend, but I I encourage her to do so.
She is, and I'm promoting her to panelists now.
Okay.
Oh, great. Okay.
All right. Good evening, Janelle. We wanted to know if you wanted to add any comments regarding your, um, the hearing process.
There we go. I'm I'm unmuted now.
There we are.
Sorry about that. Um, the only comments are that I just would hope to, uh, turn this two bedroom, one bath older home into a you know, three bedroom, two bath family home that's more efficient, more up to date. Um, that's, that's my only goal in this process.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. With that, I think I'll close public testimony and move to legal announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll I'll ask at this time, Ms. Boss. We we ask if the applicant waives their seven day timeline to submit a final written argument in connection with the hearing. So I'll present that to you at this time. Do you waive the seven day timeline?
Based on what I heard previously, I think yes, I do.
Thank you. Post hearing announcements, if the decision is not made tonight and continued to another date, the record could be reopened at that later date by motion of the council. Therefore, do not assume no further evidence will be taken. If the decision is made tonight, the council has the authority to reconsider the decision following proper procedure. This motion to reconsider is usually required to be made at the next meeting of the city council. The fact that the council could reconsider their decision does not affect the length of time for appeal of that decision. And that concludes the post hearing. City Attorney comments.
All right. Thank you, James. All right. Uh, final comment from staff and recommendation.
Yes. So my recommendation is that the city council move to adopt council ordinance twenty twenty one two eight 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 two eight eight two eight eight eight. Sorry, fuck that, two eight. Which proves a comprehensive plan map amendment from industrial to medium density residential zoning map amendment from M two light industrial to R two medium density residential. And this again would be for seven thirteen East Vermillion Street.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, um, counselors? All right, seeing none. All right. Um, all right. Now we will be ready for a motion if someone would be so would be so inclined.
And mayor, would that be by title only?
By title only, it would be. Yes, indeed. Thank you, Mr. Rux for the reminder.
Are we waving the second reading?
And waving the second reading, correct? Thank you again. All right. You all have, uh, you have it there.
Do you want me to make a motion to waive the second reading? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Bryce with a second. All right. All in favor signify by raising your left hands. All right, that's unanimous, Sue. All right, and now a motion to follow that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty one dash two eight eight eight, read by title only.
Second.
And a second by Denise. All right, all in favor? Uh, do you want a voice vote?
Mayor Rogers, would you like me to to read the title for, uh, excellent?
Title only. Thank you. And then we'll follow with a voice vote.
Excellent. In front of the council for adoption is ordinance number twenty twenty one dash two eight eight eight, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map designation from industrial to medium density residential and zoning map designation from light industrial to medium density residential for property located at seven one three East Vermillion Street, Yam Hill County Tax Lot R three two one eight D D zero zero six zero zero.
Right, thank you. And a vote please, Sue.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Cofield?
Yes.
Counselor Janelle Holloman?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Finley?
Yes.
Mayor Seven Zero.
Okay, so the that passes. Janelle, good luck with the renovation of the home. All right, moving right along, we'll move on to new businesses. This is item nine and thank you, Keith. Thank you so much. Um, all right, moving on to item nine, a resolution twenty twenty one thirty seven sixty six, a resolution to award a contract to M I G Inc. for the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan. And I believe it's city engineer Hoffman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um, yes, I'm here to talk tonight about the Americans with Disabilities Self-Evaluation and Transition. Next slide, please. So, um, some background, um, over fifty five million residents are disabled in this country. Um, that's nearly eighteen percent of our population. And in Newburgh, over ten percent of Newburgh area residents identify it as having some level of disability. One thing to note, in eight years, seven seventy one point five million baby boomers will be over the age of sixty five. Next slide, please. The Americans with Disability Act was signed by President George H W Bush in July of nineteen ninety. The ADA is a civil rights law mandating equal opportunity and access for individuals with disabilities. Next slide, please. Section four, five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy three obligates state and local governments to ensure that persons with disabilities have equal access to any programs, services, or activities receiving federal financial assistance. Next slide, please. So the titles of the ADA, um, there there are five of them. We're specifically talking tonight about title two, which is public transportation and state and local government services. Next slide, please. So title two prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability in the services, programs, or activities of all state and local government entities. It obligates all programs, services, and activities provided directly or indirectly through con- contracts, excuse me. Next slide, please. So it's all about equality and access. The primary responsibility with regard to the ADA is to provide equal access to programs, activities, and services as we know them before. Next slide, please. So there are some general nondiscrimination provisions, um, which talk about maximum integration, um, the need to anticipate needs of people with disabilities, equally effective communication, no special requirements, no extra charges. If we can't require participation in separate programs and we cannot refuse to provide service. Next slide, please. So these are some technical requirements of title two. Talking about, uh, notice making publicly available the protections, um, that in information available, excuse me, designation of a responsible employee and adoption of grievance procedures. This applies to anybody with fifty or more employees. Has an investigation of any complaint and publish grievance procedure providing prompt and equitable resolution. Next slide, please. Also requires a self evaluation, um, which evaluates services, policies, and practices and identifies what modifications need to be made in order to bring those up to into compliance. And then a transition plan, uh, which lists barriers and identifies solutions. Um, it establishes timeline for removing the barriers and identifies the person responsible, uh, for compliance of this. Now, note, as we move through the transition plan, it doesn't mean that it all has to be done immediately. Uh, we've put together a plan and we just have to follow the plan. And then we also have to engage the public. Um, we have to involve, uh, people with disabilities to participate in this process and preparation of the transition plan. Next slide, please. So here are the administrative requirements of the title two, um, provide notice, uh, complete the self evaluation, develop the transition plan, uh, develop an ADA grievance procedure, designate a person who's responsible, and include people with disabilities in the planning process. Next slide, please. So the next steps tonight are to award the consultant contract. Um, you have that resolution. Um, and then we will also need to create an accessible stakeholder group that meets online and in person as we move forward with the plan. Next slide, please. Are there any questions?
All right, any questions, folks? Raise your hands. Let's see, uh, go ahead, Mike.
So yeah, the question I have is, do we not have the capability to do this in-house instead of paying somebody over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do this? Can't we do it in-house? Don't we know what what the requirements are for ADA? Or am I missing something?
So it's it's there's very specific, um, requirements depending on what you're looking at. Programs are different than sidewalks, say, or and are different than buildings. So we do have some of the information for, um, our buildings, um, but we don't have all of the information for all of all of our programs, our websites, how we might run a meeting instead. Um, so the the consultant firm is going to help us, um, work through that process and help facilitate the stakeholder working group. We don't have the resources in-house in order to do this, um, right now, just in the amount of time it's going to take in order to complete the work.
Could, can I have a follow-up, please? So, once we get this program set up, how are we going, how are we going to administrate it year after year after year? Who's going to be in charge of that?
That's part of what this transition plan will set is who, uh, who the person is that is responsible. That could be the city manager. It could be the city attorney. It could be a risk coordinator. It could be any number of people, but we designate that as part of this plan. Um, and we also lay out, you know, where the funding may come from depending on what the issue may be. Um, and then we work through that funding and that plan as time goes on.
All right. Other questions, folks? All right, Karen, I may have missed it. Did you say, was this done sometime in the past? Or is this something that we have to periodically do or?
The city has not yet done this transition plan.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then I, the only other thing I noticed is that there were, we had two bids for this. Um, I know you customarily like more than two. Is it just because that's all you got or or was there some other reason?
Yeah, that was just all we got. We did have several other folks that reached out, um, and and asked questions on the R F P, but, um, we we only received actual, two actual bids.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, folks? All right, um, I will entertain a motion if you are, if you are ready for that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty one dash three seven six six.
Second.
And Jules with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your left hands. And that's unanimous, Sue. All righty, folks. Thank you very much, Karen. Thank you. All right, next, uh, council or item ten, uh, item ten A, and that is council committee reports. Any, uh, reports, folks, that you would like to give before we get into the rest of this subject? Go ahead, Stephanie. Council President Finley, I should say.
Yeah, this is going to be really short. I just wanted to give a little bit of an update because it feels like there's actually something to say after the last Parkway meeting. It sounds like things are moving right along and, um, we may be seeing some dirt moving, um, in the Newburgh area. Yeah, coming up soon is my hope, but, um, the the schedule two plan of the bypass is looking good and they've separated it into two parts. Um, and so that two nineteen interchange with Wilsonville Road looks like the next piece of property that may start looking a little bit different um, in terms of the bypass. So that's exciting in terms of, especially over on my side of town, how the traffic goes at, um, you know, seven A M and five P M. So we're really excited about moving that along a little bit.
To follow on that just a little bit, so phase two A is the adjustment of the two nineteen intersection with Wynuski um, and Wilsonville Road and the realignment. So that they hope to have preliminary design done by January of twenty two. So that's sixty percent design phase and they're hoping to have bid opening by February of twenty three. They need to spend that thirty two million for that by the end of twenty twenty four. Um, and then for the other phase, which is Rex Hill two two nineteen or to the St. Paul Highway, they hope to have that sixty percent design by May of twenty two. So yes, as as Council Finley said, or Council President Finley said, things are moving and hopefully we'll start to see particularly that realignment with that. If you've traveled St. Paul Highway and tried to get out of Wilsonville Road and turning one way or the other, it's it's no fun. So hopefully that'll happen fairly soon. Um, any others, folks? Other committee updates? Newburgh Downtown Coalition met this morning, um, again largely updates, trying to figure out to do things like what to do with things like trick or treat downtown. Um, not not sure that that's going to go on again, our, you know, with COVID, et cetera. It also happens to be a Sunday night, they mentioned. They also mentioned the Berg bucks, which I know, uh, city manager Weinheimer has mentioned a couple of times. So that's an exciting sort of thing that's going to be coming down the pipe here fairly soon. Hopefully in time for Christmas, so y'all can buy, uh, Berg bucks for all of those who are giving Christmas presents to. So there you go. Anybody else? Any other things? All right. And then Sue, you included some information on who's involved with what committees, et cetera.
Did you want? Yes, so that's been updated to reflect the end of the Subcommittee on Committee System Review. I keep saying I'm never going to have to utter that name again. Um, and the, uh, recent votes by the council to form a council pension subcommittee. So yeah, I I that is also on our website on the council page, so.
Okay, thank you.
And with the motion to convene C R C, they'll be starting. That's the the committee that only meets every other year, so.
Right, okay. Um, all right. Did y'all get a chance to look at the committee assignments? Any any amendments, changes, anything on that that you saw? No, the only one, and I don't know if this ought to be, uh, ought to be added or not. I I think it's sort of an official function and, um, I'm on the said core board now. So I don't know if you want to track that one or not, Sue.
Yeah, I can put it down.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Anything else? All right. Um, all right, final words here because we're, uh, we're getting to the end of this meeting. Anything else we'd like to say? Anybody? Words of, uh, words of wisdom? All right, um, otherwise, okay, I had Bryce.
Yeah, no, I know a number of us are, uh, sitting and feeling, um, what seems to be a consistent barrage of overtly racist things that are happening in Newburgh. And we're having to respond to it. So folks who are feeling that know that you're not alone, uh, even though it may not always sound like it or feel like there are folks on your side or helping move in the right direction that know that there are a lot of people that are working and trying to navigate specifically for our kids so that they don't have to continue to grow up and live in a space where, um, their life is questioned. And so, yeah, I feel it's on my heart to share that there's a lot of us going through stuff and that that's you. You're not alone.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Again, like I said earlier, when we were talking about the resolution of being an inclusive city, the news does not necessarily define us. It is not necessarily who we are. Um, and so. we've got to go out there, do good things. We all can do better, and that's all we can do. So. All right, all right. For the good of the order, thank you. And to all of you, thank you to staff, all right? Thank you to staff um, for, for what you do every day for the betterment of this community. And thank you for all of you volunteers who are doing this out of the goodness of your heart for the betterment of our community. So thank you. Have a good night and uh, we'll see some of you tomorrow. Bye-bye.